All the meeting.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty. Anybody have any conflicts with the agenda? Anybody have anything to add? Otherwise we'll consider the agenda approved. That monitor would you please read the minutes of the previous meeting?
July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, the Board of Supervisors met at nine AM with Jean Hyden, Chair presiding. Members present Dozart, Hyden, Mulbauer, and Rosberg. Member absent Schultz. Minutes of the previous meeting were read and approved. On motion, the Board recognized funds for public health and approved claims for all other departments. Motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the following resolution, twenty twenty-four dash nineteen, reclassifying certain secondary road from Area Service C Road to Area Service E Road. Let's see. Do I have a description of the road? Like I do. There it is. A portion of K Avenue, beginning at twenty-seven twelve K Avenue and running southeast approximately nine hundred and forty feet to the end of K Avenue, as established by road petition number five-five-eight. Said road generally lying in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section twenty-five Township, eighty-four north, range thirty-nine west. Voting aye, Dozart, Hyden, Mulbauer, and Rosberg. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Rosberg, seconded by Dozart, to amend uh, June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, board minutes for the public hearing. Oral objections were from Renee Fawson, Norman Erz, Dean, and Beth Argensinger. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the quote from Carol Control Systems for the mini-split for the IT room for the city center for nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. A motion did pass. We'll add that, that it passed. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the following resolution, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six, interfund operating transfer to secondary road fund. And this resolution spelled out that transfer. It's not actually asking for a transfer. It says the transfer will not exceed two hundred and thirty-four thousand eight hundred and three dollars to be a portion from a general fund to secondary road and two million nine hundred and forty-nine thousand eight or five hundred and forty-eight dollars for real services to secondary road fund. Voting aye, Dozart, Hyden, Mulbauer, and Rosberg. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Rosberg, seconded by Mulbauer, to approve the resignation of Eugene Garrett as Paradise Township Clerk. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Dozart, seconded by Rosberg, to approve the appointment of Ryan Botker Clerk and Connor Garrett Trustee for Paradise Township. Motion passed unanimously. Motion was made by Rosberg, seconded by Dozart, to approve the postponing of Plunkett proposal of commercial bird exclusion until after trying alternative methods or to which time to contact Plunkett. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozart, to approve the Treger semi-annual report, January one twenty-four through June thirtieth, twenty-four. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozart, to approve the ten X precinct central touchpad budgetary proposal and contract. Motion passed unanimously. A motion was made by Mulbauer, seconded by Dozart, to approve the following resolution, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, resolution establishing county compensation board. Voting aye, Dozart, Hyden, Mulbauer, and Rosberg. Motion passed unanimously. Josh Langhold and Jacob Ziegabart discussed with the Board about the land management agreement Crawford County has with pheasants forever. On motion duly seconded, the Board adjourned at eleven sixteen. Agendas for the next meeting are posted in the Louisville courthouse on Friday four thirty PM proceeding next meeting.
Any corrections, additions, or two, three minutes? They were very good. Thank you. Ready? Alright, so anybody have anything exciting from last week they'd like to share first?
Hey, I did. Uh, Larry here, maybe you don't know Larry, the city center, if I didn't. Tuesday, I'm at one. Wednesday, whatever, one of them days last week. They're working on that and then tiles, shulks, the carpet, the lumberyard guy is trying to get a little breeze to get their.
I did send him the number. I've met up there with Cory last week one day because we need to have that special wiring. Cory sent that to Larry for the door. There needs to be above the door and placed it for the automatic door, and that's what the holdup is on that. Um, I do now have the keys to that bottom door so we can kind of start using it, but I'm really not going to do anything with it. Just it has to be locked, otherwise it swings open, so it's not a door I want anybody to use. But that part of it's done, and as soon as that electrical was put up there and I gave the specs to Cory, Gaskell, because he's kind of involved in that, so we can get that all done at the same time. And at that same time, then, uh, the painter is kind of done up there, you know, just had a few tweaking to do, but she said that she was told she was going to come back because of saying I'm putting a television up on the wall when you first walk in. And I kind of said, that's not in your contract, and that that's not a change that I think that I think that we need to have a little bit more input on, you know, because we got one on the other wall, an outlet and a place for a TV. But she said that that wouldn't be big enough for what they want to put up there, so kind of going to have a conversation at our next word of health meeting about these changes. And we just kind of got it, so calling it done. But it looks real nice up there, the paint. Uh, you know, she was finishing it up the day I went up there to meet her, and so she has not done anything in that back room where the refrigerators go because of the confusion on what's staying, what's going, and so when with this check that we gave her, she kept six hundred and thirty dollars out till it's that finished. So she's aware that that room's not done, that she has to come back. But in her contract, it stated that other people not getting their, their jobs done couldn't affect her. And so we agreed on that, but uh, there's eleven different colors up there in that office. They, they do blend okay. It's not, I, I just think I fully would have been planning, but that was just my opinion. But it looks nice up there. Once we get those carpets cleaned, um.
Well, saying we get carpets cleaned and get the drywall done downstairs.
Yep.
They can move that, huh?
Right. Uh, we got, we are really focusing on the IT room. You know, we've got that mini splitter ordered, which was always a holdup. The water's been moved. Juan says that he would go in and do the uh, drywall prior to everything else once he was ready. And Cory kind of notated where they had to come through with those wires, so I think we're moving along very nicely, so.
Good. Good job. We have to do the RFP for the drywall.
We already do. It's already been done in that.
That was all part of the original, that. Who's doing that?
It's come over at last week and through the process of ordering the doors, Jean and I, the other tile shulks, realized that uh, three of the doorways were too small, so we had to come in and reframe three doorways.
They weren't compliant?
Well, you know, Jake specifically wanted a thirty-six inch or bigger door to get into his IT room. Probably like a twenty-eight inch door, so.
I remember him saying that.
You know, so we, and then at that point, I think we decided to lease his little office area where she'll have her private conversations. That was a twenty-eight inch door as well, so we thought we just will make that bigger, pay somebody in a wheelchair or something to get through there. I mean, that was the time to do it.
The third chance I could happen to her.
You know, so those things that we didn't see.
That's right.
You know, we're blind. We couldn't see the forest for the trees, but then once the trees were cut down, we were like, oh, there's the forest.
Well, and that affects where the uh, switches are.
Trees are cut down, you can see the forest.
Yeah, we couldn't see the trees, but you know.
But after like, we bring a tape measure out and start measuring, it was like, sounding like a good farming analogy. We'll be live like, great, just.
Just moving along.
I think it's moving along.
I don't agree he was going to put provisions in for the generator and I talked to him about that light again, and he said that little more than lightweight be enough for the whole building minus some AC units. There won't be any need to specifically pull certain outlets. With a single meter, it's going to be a lot easier.
He's simple, he's moving. Also, Black House Energy spent all the money, uh, making this one useful for the class.
Oh, they have, okay. Yeah, they had to come in there, yeah, they had to do some things with it.
I also let him in last week one day. He's just kind of, yeah, luckily I live right outside town, so when he would come into town and so, yeah, so we kind of, yeah, but I'm feeling good about things going forward. I did talk to Luis a little bit again and uh, just.
So she's all over the cabinets?
Yes, and she's still.
Do they want to get them ordered? Because once the drywall, electrical's done, the drywall and stuff will move pretty fast.
Great, and then, uh, yeah, we should have some paint left over that we can use in that big lobby room. We're about to take you off that, whatever, we have whatever.
One and a half, yeah.
The one in the screw hole when it's.
I think it's nine feet of paint.
Yep, and then the cabinets and the drywall, paint, cabinets, you know.
Yep.
Yep. See you later. Yeah, cool. Be interesting. Last thing I got is Dwayne handed this to me that we have been declared a disaster area in the April twenty-sixth storm, so that was official, except from this emergency management lady down in the point. So we, people will be available, but you know, Paul had that eighty-dollar bill or whatever, that he's.
He's already filed for it.
I can see, Paul did.
He did.
Yep, so what, with this statement, I guess it made it official, that would have been getting it back.
That's cool.
We get some money back from your state, but that homeland security.
Yep. Yep.
Well.
Very good, alright.
Always thanks everybody for the time, words, and thoughts, a lot of good stuff.
Tough time. Craig, you want to just, you know, just go around the table? Is that alright?
Sure. Uh, I didn't have anything. Today at noon, I got uh, early childhood.
Meeting at noon?
And that's it.
Have you met the new superintendent of the school?
I have not. I will do that today if she is in attendance at the meeting.
She was our guest at Rotary last week, and so very knowledgeable, especially the book. Some of the things that she looked about, we made her decision to come to uh, Crawford County and Dennis, and some of the stats she looked at to uh, see where she could be useful and what, what they have to work on. So she gave a very nice uh, talk with me.
I would, I could ask.
I, I could ask a trivia question, if you'd like to.
Let's do it.
Well, thank you, Josh. Okay, how many students were in Crawford County in eighteen ninety-two? Students.
Students.
In the.
What did we have for?
It was Crawford County community.
And all below one roomers?
All below one roomers, and there were some incorporated schools, Dennison, Sleswig, Manawa, Vale on the west side, I believe, all had incorporated.
What year, eighteen?
Eighteen ninety-two.
Eighteen ninety-two.
Thousand, okay.
I'm going to say sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred?
Yep.
What's that?
My number's seven twenty. Your number's seven twenty?
Alright.
Despite the prices.
I, uh, you know what, there was a lot of, there was a lot of those big Lutheran and Catholic families down the. I'm going to go with twenty-two fifty.
I guess the closest. The actual number is sixty-five hundred.
What?
So there were bigger Catholic in that Lutheran.
The population of Crawford County in eighteen ninety was twelve thousand five hundred. So half of those were kids. Yeah, that just tells you, I guess, how young the community was at that time. People moving in, all had families.
You know, we were talking about.
Crawford County Board of Supervisors allocated towards all of those sixty-five hundred kids, fifty-two cents a kid to go towards.
Fifty-two cents?
What's that now? What state allocates? It's state thousand.
And I think the moment in play, last information that I saw was all of the students in Crawford County in the year two thousand twelve was just about three thousand.
Wow. What was the average age of the citizen?
That, that I don't, I don't, I don't know that.
Because you said, you know, it's younger.
You know, I was just talking the other day with somebody about this. A lot of times the people that were coming across in Homestead, and a lot of them, a lot of their wives were thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years old, and the husband was eighteen. I mean, they, hell, they should have been in school. And they, and we were talking about how we, how we kind of stifled the maturity growth of kids because they aren't forced into life situations like they were in that day and age, you know? They've got time to be kids now, so to speak. But it also slowed down the maturity because they have time to play. But that, that was what we, I was talking about that, so that's, that's pretty interesting. The county was that young. Half of the population were in school. But they were still working. Dad used to sweep the floor at the lumberyard, try to rope, bring home gold that he'd house.
Too bad we don't have any prizes today, because you were the winner, but.
For what?
We're mostly not attributed today.
I was still far enough away that we probably wasn't, yeah.
I had people guess a hundred.
Yeah, yeah. Yep, there we go.
Pretty amazing. That's real cool.
Only thing I have is that Luis wants to remind us to save the date on this training. Uh, it's basically for veterans, but everybody can benefit from it. Uh, she has three different sections on that day. I'll pass it around. She highly advises us to come over. So Dennis and Police Department is coming to the public office the twentieth, nine-thirty, twelve, and two. Uh, but just, Dale's coming from Omaha. It's the one-hour sessions, and afterwards she'll have time for one-on-one questions. So just want to make sure everybody kind of saved the date on that, got anybody that you think could benefit from learning some suicide prevention.
Be a good morning that afternoon. At four o'clock meeting for the executive board.
Yeah, I just passed that around, so.
Maybe you have to say you're going to.
We'll decide that today. Alright, other than that, uh, the uh, meeting that I'm supposed to have for uh, my three county Annette Coster's been got canceled, but we will have a meeting with Molly Scott script tomorrow at nine. And I'll pass this around for everybody to take a look at.
For everybody.
This is the president and for everybody to report.
What everyone? Thank you.
Alright. So Dave, what do you have?
So yeah, Craig and Terry and I, and I. Pretty lengthy IT meeting, and uh, you guys can tell.
Oh.
Listen on, so what we talked about, current projects that he's working on with the sonology replacement and his clivity host replacement. Think about one month to install. Craig asked what a sonology replacement is, and I still don't understand what it is. Why you asked to be kind of explained to you?
I didn't bring my notes in, so I can't, I can't help you.
We're there. It's some IT jargon that. Have to say, very. Now, some of the things though you did talk about, we, we discussed.
There's the cost associated with those, if I just jump in.
Yes, yes, go ahead, please.
The sonology replacement, uh, cost is eighty-five hundred. It's got a five-year warranty. He budgeted fifteen thousand. And then the simplicity host replacement is fifty-three hundred over three years. And with that, no additions would be needed if he budgeted six thousand.
So don't let him have a budget amendment. He's over. He's under spent already.
Yeah.
I don't know that.
And he's going to do a part of this backup for the Office three sixty-five.
They asked, does everybody here use that Office three sixty-five? Is that being legalized as? I mean, is that?
I mean, that's our outlook. That's our email. Yep.
Yeah, everything.
Well, yeah, there's so many more features that goes on.
I'm sure we don't know all.
Yeah, there's a whole lot.
We would have to try to.
Sharing and that you're paying for. It's not just about.
We would have to be educated on that.
He did bring up, if you're ready, conservation. He brought up about Wi-Fi and yellow smaller, right? Stable internet, so the campgrounds. Need to consider some of that infrastructure update up there. We had talked about nature center, about being involved in that. Actually, it came about without maybe it was a better route if we had to do anything based on their needs. Have a fiber come to the nature center and shoot internet down. It's get around on there. We had to discuss that, well, all these other things going on too. I think it's something that the Conservation Board would need to discuss. That's something they want, that's they need to come and have discussions with us about. We're feeling okay with doing it or not. I said, well, we need to keep focus on our needs of doing business, providing service for us before we go spend money to provide internet for the campers. Uh, I have my, struggle to wrap my mind around that one.
What would students do?
What's that?
Right.
What would students say right about now about internet on camping?
You know, we need to take care of our needs in the courthouse first. Yeah, that was brought up.
I mean, I, I will say that part of this, Jake just brought it up. It's looking long-term. That's something that was even on tip we were going to do, just said, hey, this is something that kind of concerning right now. Hours and ways to go off is the first we thought about. You know, just going right to the conservation shop and there going out to the nature center. And then through our discussions, it kind of was like, hey, maybe it makes more sense to go to the nature center. Then from the nature center, shoot there. And we, he, he agreed that uh, right, is that, is it, because we even asked the question, is it a demand of our campers? Are the campers kind of like, hey, we're here to get away from all this stuff?
We don't really need it or not. I got my phone access. I got phone.
You know, so. A couple of times I had a camp out there this summer, and I have been bounced that question quite a bit, where's the internet? Okay. My, and I think that's probably more this year because the cell phone service has been sketchy at best. Years of late, if they're truly switching to five G and they're shutting towers off and stuff of that nature. I know, I think that might be driving my question, because I never heard that in other years. I just wonder if definitely was an internet out there, so. I think if they get the five G and everybody's happy with that again, I don't know if this will even be an issue. It just seems to be an issue this year, what I gather.
Be a top head written down, ten thousand to get fiber there, maybe a twenty-five thousand. I mean, this is just raw proposals. They don't, they don't seem to get it to it, but could be twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, uh, you know, I get playing the waiting game. I mean, as they're bringing fiber everywhere else in the country, they're going to be anything.
Well, then we ask them to get ahold of Wynn to find out what the projection was for that, for their wire, for their fiber and stuff. And some of this is just to be able to get Kelly to be able to do business on a daily basis without Jerry ringing this and that and the other thing, so she can have a phone line and, right?
Yeah, that was tied into. So, I mean, if you're going to do that, and what's one step further to send internet down to the camper?
It was all just discussion.
Right.
Well, there's a lake in the way.
We'll just float it across the lake.
So she doesn't have good internet out there.
He said it's kind of a mandated system of how they make it work now.
And when the nature center is built, you know, computers were not a thing, so there's not even Jax out there.
Okay.
For as printing is concerned for her, a lot of times she'll maybe email something to herself and then go down to the conservation center and have to print it off down there.
Okay.
Or email Jody or whatever.
I feel like we kind of have to, Jake, is hey, if this is something that's going to develop into bigger conversations, you know, we need to bring, have those with the Conservation Board to see what their actual needs and wants are. You know, it has to be a hand-in-hand working together. And maybe nothing happens at this time either.
Yeah.
Yeah, it can't be dictated by IT. I think Conservation Board has to be the people that initiate this. The clients or customers.
Employees need.
Employees, we, we need, we need this. This has to be better. It hasn't come from there yet.
Some of the other things we talked about, and a lot of these items were just discussion things, nothing to be brought up, so it's on our radar. We talked about passwordless authentication in our laptops, computers, systems. Run around and bother that you.
Sorry, still have to have.
I'm sure not, not sure if I understand it entirely, because then you still need a code, a number, uh, yeah.
What did he call it? Did he call it a code?
Identification.
No, that's the.
So do you like a sequence?
Two things.
That's multi-factor, I think. This is passwordless. But you still. Yeah, like. And then if that don't work, then you still have to go back to.
Still have to know that number, and like it'd be a six-digit number because it's less breakable than a four-digit number or less. So, all those.
Right, I mean, they like that on her phone, or Jesse Horizon.
Yeah, I have a couple of things that are fingerprint.
I'm at the burnt my thumb or something.
End your head, don't bring it over here.
So that, it's something that's just things that are, we didn't talk about in the IT world. Badging at the courthouse, we talked about that, of having your badge access to the doors and not having you know, our janitorial staff open and unlock the doors morning and night. There's a cost to that. There's ten to fifteen thousand just to do our outside doors.
Can't we just have one door that's accessible? Otherwise the rest of them get locked. I mean, they got to open it for the public at seven-thirty in the morning.
Would be out of time.
The system, that keyless system would, would be on a timer with a lock.
You just have one door, like you want to run the access side, just badge in case you. You know, because that's where there's times that, like having meetings and stuff at night, and everybody's already gone, and luckily Amy was still there for a while, so I said, can you come on at the end?
It'd be a system where you automatically open your doors at seven-thirty or whatever we chose, and they automatically lock it four o'clock, four-thirty, whatever, and people could still get out, but people couldn't get back in and just get your badge. So that's still kind of a cost. Terry did make a very, very good point to Jake and said, not be behind ruining historical preservation of our courthouse. Do these things. We want to still maintain our, our look of what, what our courthouse is of history here. Don't want to start cutting doors out and putting in stuff that doesn't match.
So is he going to be monitoring that like daily, uh, you know, the holidays, it doesn't so horizontally unlock itself and then, you know?
I mean, I mean, you can specify the dates that the timer is off and it doesn't unlock the doors, like Saturday and Sunday. Yeah, certain specific dates which are holidays.
Responsibility for somebody to remember that that's a holiday. You know, it just seems like that's.
Yes, it is.
Right, I mean, he talked about that at the beginning. That would be the first step, that, you know, the multi-phase thing where we would have maybe a lot of the interior doors would do the same thing um, as far as, you know, safety and, and uh, active shooter type incidences where you can lock a door automatically, so prevent people from getting in, leave people where they are, that the shooter's in your room if you're insured.
Yeah, and now the cops can't get in, because we have them locked out.
But just things that, you know, items of discussion.
Yeah.
All the things to discuss.
Get a half, because I mean, there's just a, a point where, I mean, from a cost standpoint to a safety standpoint, where do you go with it? You know, I don't think, they certainly haven't had active shooter incidences in state of Iowa and county courthouses, it's not been an issue, but, uh, you know, it's, you still wanna say, hey, that's still a possibility.
It is, it is.
Our citizens, we need to protect our elected officials, and if they come and shine up for us, we're gonna do that.
Nobody does that.
So, you know, this, certainly something that, that we need to think about, talk about, consider, that's just having, really what it is.
Craig did a very good job keeping the meeting on task.
Yeah.
Moving forward.
Sat in my hot seat and he did it.
He was a natural.
He was a chairman.
Very proud of you.
I pretended, I said, I'm gonna pretend to be Gene Hyde today, and that was the hardest thing I ever did.
He liked it so much.
It's already been voted in sometime.
Loner, uh, we did talk about loner pool expansion, which.
What now?
So, remember that discussion?
Not at all.
Okay.
Loner?
Uh, so how many, how many do you have? Remember?
Two or four, I can't, I don't know. It was clear as mud.
So, I think we have four loner laptops.
Loner laptops.
Takes a training or.
Oh.
Home, you know, which is not very well known about. So we have, I think, four laptops and, and the one they are older ones that were being turned in for a new one, but still had some good use of, to use.
Right.
Which is good, so we're repurposing.
Glad to hear that.
Um, and we told Jake to get this out to all the department heads that, hey, we have these loner laptops, so if you take off to a convention, or if you gotta go somewhere, you need to work, loner takes a phone. We have something available that is a temporary item to use.
And what information does that loner laptop all have upon it?
It's a way to access your emails.
Just to.
Use our emails. I think so, yeah, just, it would probably just be emails. I mean, maybe, I don't know if it would have like Word and Excel, so if you needed to type notes or create something while you're on the, yeah, I don't know, I don't. That's why you take, I, I mean, it's not why you go to a, why you go to a, I don't know, never mind.
But I guess if you don't have something to take along.
Nobody has, they don't have.
This won't work.
We have four of them. The last thing we discussed was policy development. Pushback on some personal apps, which would, I don't know.
On their county stuff, all these counties, yeah.
They're using personal apps on county stuff.
Which.
So people wanted your following, is so you could, uh.
But you keep that phone.
Right, so that's exactly what she said.
Yeah. And that was not meant for those.
And I know it's awkward to have to carry two phones around, I see people doing that, the purpose of the county's help is to keep it, to count the business. Put your personal, so you have a phone, it's pretty comfortable, I mean.
And that's.
Thanks for remembering that, David.
I have a dog that does.
It's your money, right?
Yeah, right?
Thank you for that. Right, so, you get, um, you get, I will not be here next Tuesday. Okay, thank you, do the door.
Yes, it will be. You remind me. One minute. And we're out, you know.
Well, speak up.
You can zoom in.
I will be rolling shoes, but they like.
Like you're there, I could possibly do that.
On your horse, that would be a good one.
Mount your.
That would be good.
Mount your little tablet right there on the horn.
I will be.
Are you taking your own horse out there?
Yes. Say, eat of our own, and then.
I can live with it.
Yeah.
Catch your.
Hi, I'm. We're came up inside of the mouth a little minute.
It'll be eight.
There's some boulders, two and a.
So.
Make it.
We just say forty of us, we need.
People.
And then we want ten. Cool. And then you're equal.
Four equals out, I'll never.
That just gets one section.
I will just be getting back from the Black Hills on board. So, I got that, we just. But I gotta get back to you, babe. Yes, this is too big.
And have the chair and the vice chair both come.
I'm not gonna have them, I was sharing as, as a timeline a little bit, so, uh, we'll be coming back by Monday.
It'll actually southwest to Colorado Springs.
I have some party for your next Tuesday.
Not through there, last summer, yeah, you talked about it, yeah.
All right, nice update, what do you have?
Well, it depends on how bad you wanna meet and date.
Uh, you only have seven, nine minutes.
If you're gonna date us. You do a good job.
And then date your little heart out.
Date. We had our central hour due for the tensions last week, we've got some stuff that, and finally, they've been, we've been filled with closed door meetings. And, uh, it's been about, it's out now, or we've, it was a decision made, so. There were some nurses that made some complaints about harassment, a couple of them. And, uh, I was, I didn't get in all of them, because I was Zooming and we didn't have access. We actually found where you could use Teams and control who was in the meeting. As long as people were honest when there was just them sitting there. But, uh, so we've got a different way to get in, so I was able to actually get in the one this week. And, uh, the, the nurses' complaints were found to be, you know, there was some validity, I mean, they've. Understood what they were about, what their complaint was, but it wasn't really about harassment, no, it's because of times, you know, they're part-time nurses, and when they work, and, and phone stuff. And there was a lot of stuff that was, uh, really wasn't meant as harassment, it was just kind of company policy through the agency of how they work things, and the nurses didn't think that that was the way it should be handled, and then. Because they thought, may they been complaining, got worse, but it really, I mean, didn't appear to us that it did, I should say, with that connection. Uh, then there was also some stuff where the executive board. Trying not to say about stuff that hasn't been talked publicly, but, uh, the executive board had, uh, we got, I think there's four or five people that are on that, Tupac Code. Latifah and Kyle Stecker, and anyway, that, that, it's a good board of people, I mean, it's a good group of people to pay attention to the stuff. But there was a complaint filed against them by our director, that he thought they were overstepping their bounds. But I think, and, and I'm just gonna go ahead and say this. Yeah. I'm just gonna say it, and I mean, that was also found to be on top. So, I mean, that's why I'm not afraid to talk about it. But, uh, will that be the end of it? Well, let's hope so, I mean, you know, I think that they're trying to find ways to work together, was all about creating a damn handbook. Does that sound familiar to anybody? Where you got another board between you and something and, and, uh, just. And it was all about their fight to make sure that he's notifying different things where the counties are getting notified, or the commissions getting notified. Where he believed as the director, he ran things and he was above all that, and he was the one that should write the handbook, and it didn't need to be approved by the commission, and. No, sir, he not operate, you know? So, I mean, there was a little bit to that, you know? Was he getting carried away? No, but I think, you know, it's just like any one of these people that have had commissions that haven't challenged anything that they've done for fifteen years, and Tony's done a lot to build a hell of an empire over there. And, uh, things that have helped augment the juvenile detention system. I mean, just looking at the transportation stuff that he's created, or, you know, they, uh, where they go out and do the drug analysis, that's all the different hospitals and stuff. So, I mean, he's done a lot of good things, helped, some great things. And, uh, so, I mean, sometimes we start to think that people can't function without us, you know, and I think that's how I, that's, that's my personal life. Nobody said that, that's just me talking. That sometimes we get a little bit too full of ourselves, well, I've had points in my life like that, my wife says I have every third, fourth week, so. But, that's just a. But anyway, uh, the, uh, fact is, is we, you know, gotta remember that sometimes that it's a team. And there's a reason that the commission exists, it's, it's to represent the counties for oversight. And, uh, so I think that they're gonna work on that, uh, it just got to be some headbutt, and Kyle's our chair for our commission. And, uh, he's not afraid to get in there and stir things up, which, you know, it's my kind of people, so I. That's all right, he's, you know, he was challenging some things and, and it wasn't sitting real well. But, uh, they're gonna establish a committee, and Kyle said, just for the sake of sanity, I don't think he's gonna put himself on that committee for finishing the handbook, redoing it, getting it cleaned up. And, uh, Bob, so you guys know who that is, Fort Hodge? You know who we're talking about? Well, that big guy used to be a cop, uh, very direct, no nonsense, man, he's just. I mean, I, I like him, you know, he's, he's no nonsense. And, uh, he's, he's on the executive board, or executive committee, and, uh, does a really good job. I think he'll probably be on that, and that, Latifah will probably be on it. And Vance, or Lance, uh.
Hard cap.
She'll speak her mind to him.
Oh, yeah, everybody that's on that, they're, they're independent thinkers, but they all, they're all good communicating people. You know, that'll work together to create something good, so I, 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 to this day, you know, I mean, that commission's a, you gotta go pro over there, but it's all people that are on that, and there's a bunch of them.
Most of them show up or do they?
What?
Most of them show up or do they?
Yeah, a, a majority will show up, you know, I mean, it, it just depends on what's going on. Uh, uh, Anne McDonough, uh, I think she's debuting. Uh, she's, I think she was an attorney, but she's a supervisor now, that is one of the smartest ladies you can talk to, I mean, she's sharp as a knife. I actually, I, I really enjoy that commission just for the variety of minds and how well they function, and, and actually how we all pull together and think for a thing, which is one, when there's thirty-some people sitting there, that's pretty impressive, actually. At times, I actually was in our Zoom, or in our closed session, I actually just, I barked a little bit, I said, I'm pretty sure this is all our moments where two hundred folks are spilling the. And our, our HR attorney, she, uh, she got a pretty good laugh on that, so I suspect she agreed with me. But anyway, uh, it's, it, it, I think that all them issues that were there are starting to solve themselves, you know, I mean, I think Tony was trying to protect himself, I think he felt attacked, you know? And we've seen that here with different commissions and stuff too, so I thought that, that are different boards, groups, so. You know, you just gotta work your way through it, I mean, everybody's gotta try and find their way back to being an adult, so I think that's taking care of itself, otherwise everything over there was pretty much away, you know, gosh, they wanted to talk about this. Anyway, that's that for the central. I did, I didn't make up a copy of the report, because I did it online. Uh, I wanna go over these here, this is made for a, by a guy, this was, uh, in our, in our, uh, actually, he wasn't. I think this was in rural action. We had a, we had a guy come in and give a seminar, he was asking about our opioids, our money, and I don't know if we have any of that left, or is it all committed?
No, we, we don't, we've got only part of it committed.
Okay, this is, these are pills, this is a packet. If you have pills at home that you don't know what to do, and you don't use them anymore, or some type of an opioid or something like that, these guys in Minnesota make these, and it's, uh, this is their. I'll, I'll pass this thing around, I, I don't wanna try to be the salesman for it, but what it does is it makes the drugs inert. So the kid couldn't get a hold of them and OD or something, a little kid will pick up a bottle or something. But you could dump, you, you use this to basically put it in this thing, shake it up, and do your thing. And he, he did a sample thing up there in front of us, but I wouldn't have it, I was thinking, grab it. Anyway, prevention, basically, so you didn't have anything like that, but they're up in Minnesota, Speed, Speed Terra, that's the name of the place.
Have you any idea how much those little things?
They, they weren't that expensive. No. So, I mean, it'd be something for us to look into, and maybe have on, and maybe even have them available.
And just make them open to the public, that the public can come and, and just pick one up and.
Like, it doesn't matter, that's how.
Some of them have, just step in the prescription drug bottle and shake it up and throw it away, then that, that way.
Yeah, it's, it's inert at that point, so you can just throw it away. And, uh, take, it wipes out all the drug effect, I mean, it's, it was pretty, uh, pretty interesting, I mean, it grabbed my attention, I think, I wonder how much money we got left, that'd be so bad. You know, I mean, if public health had a bunch of them on hand, that people could stop and get them, you know, something like that, so I just.
Or even the hospital.
The hospitals, yeah. Anywhere.
Sure, it's all, if our, part of your communities have places, you know, certain days.
Where you can come and just leave off those old prescriptions.
They're white, they get around. What's that?
Purple light at drop off.
And they like that, when I walk in the VA, they got a big box there, a drop box of old meds. So, anyway, I mean, that's. That really, that's what the reason I was on top, is I thought, all the things I got this time, that one seemed to strike most that we could be, make some good use of, but, uh, otherwise, I got, well, you can see I was a little bit.
Another ad that since Paul got here is that last week we did get our ad for the new engineer out with, uh, ISAC, Iowa Engineers Association, Iowa Land Surveyors Association, and Iowa.
Is there deadline on, uh, when we receive applications?
I mean, I think that works, it's thirty days, I think the other ones are longer.
And we can extend it.
Right, and we can extend it, I, the other ones are just.
But did you say when you wanted in, stuff in by?
Yep.
At, or the disresumes in by.
Hey, it's open, send it in.
Okay. I don't hear. And I had one inquiry, I think it'd be a good one to say five.
So cool.
Yeah.
Not ready.
No.
Okay. He'd be a good one. Pretty much all where he's at. Yeah, I saw it.
Yeah, I see. Hopefully, you know.
Yeah.
Uh, okay. These are on here. Well, there's three going that way, three going that way. There you go. Uh, Western Iowa Power, just saying electric service line across 130th Street, so, pretty routine there, the Fox Cola Project, they're working on the forest lab, uh, got the base board, and they're working on the flume portion. And to get it poured, so hopefully soon we'll get that in, and once they get the base in, going up and out of there, then it's, they're pretty much home free. In case they catch one of those three or four inch rains, they can kinda be a bit of a problem. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, take to you, I mean, just the work.
Mm-hmm.
A lot faster.
Oh, yeah, yeah, once you get on a concrete floor that you can put forms on and add steel on, and so. So it's going slower than we had hoped, but it's going, they're, they're, they're pretty good at what they do, it's just taking a little longer. Great crew, they moved up to J Avenue there, Kyle's neck of the woods.
Yep.
About a mile and a half, agree, they're gonna do it there, so they'll be there for about six weeks or so. Bridge Crew, they're finishing up the structural plate, uh, over here on E Avenue, they got, uh, about a day and a half, maybe other backfill on that, then it'll be done down in there, and then they're gonna start patching, we're gonna start south and build. Yeah. Got a bunch of patching to do down there, so they'll get it done, and then go up on E sixteen and do those, and then go back to Bridges and Colours. So they'll probably be working on those for three weeks or so. You know, just a good time, not, not as much traffic this time of the year, so it's a good time to get that patching done on the pavements. Um, the, uh, roadside, they continue to spray, they're gonna be wrapping things up here pretty soon on that though, so then we'll get started on seeding here in a couple of weeks, got a lot of seeding to do with all the projects we've been working on. Uh, electronic timekeeping, I talked to a couple of board members, uh, they were pretty. Um, we've just given it a really, really good effort, and there's probably no one that is more interested in seeing it, that, that be successful, but I think the program just needs to be maybe looked at again, and be a little more intuitive. Uh, we've just had a lot of issues with it. So we've been continuing to input our time, just like we've done in the past, Amy's done a great job. Um, you know, we're not throwing in a towel, just saying, let's take a timeout, maybe go back to the old method for the time being, get Tyler out here, maybe work with them, and, and try to, try to improve upon, upon the, uh, the program, the software.
Is it identifying the different locations, or when they change, uh, duties, or is it just clocking in?
Well, it's just a matter of just, there's, there's a lot inconsistencies, and, and I'm not saying, I mean, the data input and in, you know, the software itself, there's some, some glitches, you know, that, 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 that come up, and. So, I mean, we've been able to work through them all, but it's just very time consuming, when it starts to take more time, we've been in this for six months, when it's taking more time on the part of the foreman and Kathy, typical input payroll, considerably more time than it has in the past, we haven't gained anything. And then it becomes frustrating, because there's all this back and forth between her and the foreman, trying to get things, so they're accurate, and so, again, I think, you know, Amy's done a fantastic job of trying to, you know, you know, roll this out. And so again, I think, you know, Amy's done a fantastic job of trying to, you know, you know, roll this out. You know, we just, you know, I think there's room for improvement.
Go to the, how I explain more, just a fault of the program.
Well, you, you know, I, we're probably not the most tech savvy group. Okay. You know, we need. Well, I, we, we, we could go there. I, I just think that, you know, in talking with, you know, Kathy and the foreman. It's just not intuitive enough to. So it has to be self explained. It just has to be self explained. It has to be so easy that. Doesn't give rise to the, the cause of error, so you have, it has to be intuitive and more intuitive, yes. And so, uh, we just think that, you know, if they could go back and take a look at it, we're willing to sit down. I mean, all, all of us would sit down with Tyler and say, here's the challenges that we have, you know, and so the demographic we have as far as forty base in our secondary road is probably very similar to what most every, every county does have. And so we're the first county that's, and, and I think the only county, like Amy, the state, that's trying to use this with the secondary road department. And we've tried, we've tried. But when I continue to hear frustrations, concerns from people that are very good at what they do. I'm not gonna continue to try to push a square hole, I swear, peg into a round hole. It's just not fitting.
Does Amy think that we're training or is she just thinking the whole?
We talked about that, uh, you know, and she's more than happy to go out, do whatever. I, I just would really like to see Tyler come out too and say, how can I make this program a little easier?
Are we doing that, do you think, have we?
And she's working on that. She's working on that. And we're not throwing in the towel, we're just saying, let's take a timeout, let's get every, let's re, regroup here and try this again after they've had a chance to.
You thought it was something more like an app, if they just go on that phone and they.
Yeah, and they're trying to do it on their phones and tablets, which is much more difficult than trying to do it at a desktop computer.
Right.
We don't have desktop computers out of the shop, so.
Do they have, and have tablets?
They have tablets, yeah. They're not, they're not as big as this. It's probably about half the size of this tablet here, but yeah.
My end likes this thing, so they may come big.
Yeah.
I understand the frustration, there's nothing more.
So we can still, everything will continue on. Just have to kind of.
So we're now, everybody's writing things down.
They've been doing time sheets and electronics since the beginning of the summer, because we were having so many issues Kathy was having. There was no way for her to, to, to sort through them. So I said, well, just have, when we started ten hour days, they said, have to do both. So we've been doing both. That's the only way she can kinda go ahead and fix the errors. So we're just having, we're just not gaining ground.
Sounds like double work.
Yeah.
All right, then let's hope we can solve it.
So that's kinda where we're at there. The, uh, Park County, Sunday afternoon, one, three, if anybody's interested. I think if you're really interested, go down. They're having an open house on a facility that they built. So it's kind of a combined office maintenance facility down by Council House, so. If anyone's interested, uh, you know, again, you know, we've done a good job of making outline shops. Main shop continues to function okay, but it's gonna need to be upgraded.
So it's gonna be Polk County's main shop or is this just?
You know, I don't know. Kinda think it is. It's a big facility, interesting. It's in Council House, right by the airport, just outside on Highway six there, so. Yeah, you know, I, I think it'd be interesting to go down, talk to them, take some pictures, get some ideas. It's on Thursday, yeah, from one to three. Fire it again. Yeah, but I was gonna be down there, I'm thinking, oh. Well, I, if you're in the area and wanna stop out and take a look sometime, you'd probably be more happy to show you. So, but, uh, so anyway, I wanna make that where the, yeah, I have a good night in closure. So I did get a little more detail on, you know, forty two working days that started on July eighteen, forty, forty two calendar days to get the project done. Okay, if they get done earlier, there's a five thousand dollar day in set. They get done later, there's a five thousand dollar damage.
So where's forty two working days take you?
It's in August, uh, forty two calendar, yes, it's calendar days. It's not work days, it's calendar days, yes. Takes just, well, August has thirty days, you have eighteen, uh, there's, well, it takes you about to the end of August. End of this, that they have to have the project done or they start giving big five thousand dollars days. I don't think so. I think it's forty two calendar days you gotta have it done.
Who's doing the work there?
Peterson, Pat Drankin. So I drove some of the detour routes this morning, or the unofficial travel ones. You know, and of course our signs were down on two seventy, so I looked it up, back up. Haven't had any calls lately. I know that the board has been getting calls, but, um, truly, you know, I think we've done everything we can at this point. What does control, I think that it's needed, uh, have not had any calls, uh, the last several days. So I think, you know, after that first week or so, people kind of try to, you know, they start to figure out that, hey, can't get through, you did a nice job on the radio, Gene. You know, telling people that to be respectful, you're gonna try to take a gravel and drive slow, careful. Little rain, always out.
Oh, then if people, I noticed that people were using the level B road. You know, this side, hands off fires that you guys did four, four years ago or something. They did that road and I noticed cars going on there, um, yesterday. With the rain, it's like, do people understand that that is a level B road and they go there because now that's my moment of holiday.
That's how, yeah, I know, and, and so. So it is, it is, uh, you know, I mean, there's just, you know, cause if you start doing one thing and pushes it somewhere else, it just moves the problem around. You just hope that people kind of find a route that they're comfortable with. So ahead for the next six weeks or so, we got, until the end of the month.
Certainly busy around.
Yes, it is, yeah, they, they find routes, yeah, so. Uh, safety meeting and luncheon that we're gonna have out of Hill Smoke on the twenty ninth, FYI there, then we'll not be here next week. So.
What's, what's that event for?
That's called Paying Association. So they bring a lot of people, yeah, they bring a lot of people down. Yeah, yeah, probably, so anyhow. So, and they won't have the vanilla land transfer either next week, uh, after. That's the swapping of lots down with that one, so we're guys. And not a lot of storm, there's two trees down here in the. Actually, yeah, a little chance, a lot of better chances, so. Welcome to race.
We did, we did get approved for the faster documentation.
Yeah, but I, I submitted the secondary roads. Well, I, I hope so. Usually they come out and do an assessment.
But officially just heard, so.
I'm definitely gonna get this.
All righty, thank you, Paul. All righty, we have Colin here. Our next, next item is discussion pick act on the resolution twenty twenty four. Twenty eight counties position on eminent domain, uh, perhaps we should look at the pipeline. So, uh, Colin, you wanna come up in case he has any questions? I think you did a really good job of, uh, going through and, uh, just every paragraph was addressed on, uh, whether it was, uh, true or I have one extra, uh, who didn't get one.
Probably Terry, yeah.
So, uh, I didn't see anything that jumped out that you had concerns with that made it something we wouldn't want to entertain, uh, approving unless you wanted to, uh, add anything. Did anybody find anything that, uh, through Colin just getting of the ordinance that was out there? If they have any.
So I guess I didn't see this is proper county resolution.
Pretty much.
Is that in the email that he sent out?
He just brought that.
No, I brought that this morning. Okay, it's the same, it's the same one, but it's for our county.
So you just changed Branser to Crawford?
Yes.
Okay, even though there were some paragraphs that you had said, eh, that's kinda iffy, that's something.
I, I just wanted to flag up your attention, uh, and, and let you guys make the decision. And so, the bottom line is this is a, a resolution, not an ordinance. So it's not a dictate like ordinance, this would be a regulation that ordinance is ten, would, would do. Essentially, it's a county's position statement. And whether or not you want to pass the position statement and the resolution, uh, is gonna be your guys' call.
So this is identical to the Branser.
Yes.
Even the final paragraph that you cannot.
Yep, yep.
But Colin, there's nothing in here that you feel is gonna put us in hot water as far as getting us into a lawsuit.
I mean, no, not on its face because it's a, it's a resolution, but you always run the risk of a litigious entity wanting to flex. I would say that for the purposes of anything that's preempted or would add those additional hoops that we talked about at the last time we talked about this issue. It would not be a hoop for any company that they would have to pass through in order to begin construction or to gain a permit or anything like that. So in, in that sense, the, the county would, would be clear. But never know who's gonna take exception to what and what the reaction's gonna be.
What it does do is they are opinion.
Or objection damage.
It's what we said in the very beginning and what we all feel is.
I will say with the majority of people that I've talked to within our communities, at least to what they have said or expressed to me is that whether they're for the pipeline, against the pipeline. The majority of them have said, I do not agree with the use of eminent domain.
That's what, I have not had anybody say that. I think that's great that they can just come and take your land for any purpose. Uh, I highlight in favor of approving this, so.
I mean, I, I guess I, I'm just curious, um, what I, I wanna thank Colin for what he's done is, uh.
I know you gave up your weekend for it.
Well, at least it's something I heard it. But, uh, I mean, his, Colin's advice and I guess just his, uh, interpretation of the law and interpretation of, uh, I, I B B's rulings in the past and how they affect us and, and this specific nature to me have just been spot on. And so I, I put faith in him and that's why I guess I'm just curious now that I got to look at this is that, do you think that we should have something, if there's things in that Branser County thing that you are not in agreement with. Should this resolution just be specifically Crawford County and something that we don't copy another county? If our county attorney says, you know what, this paragraph, I don't think we need, this paragraph, I don't think we need. I'm fully, uh, in favor, I guess, is if Colin says, hey, these really don't mean anything or this is, and just to take those out and have Crawford County's own resolution based on advice, I guess, from our county attorney, I'd like to have you respond to that.
Sure. Well, I will tell you that the task that I was, that I felt that I was given was I was contacted by Gene to review this to see if it would be something that, uh, Crawford County could do. And so what I told her is I would review it, uh, give my opinion on it and put it in a form for, for your guys. I mean, ultimately, this is a call for you guys. And so I put it in a form that you guys can take action on or not. And so what I viewed my task as was to kinda take something, digest it, help you guys digest it and then make it in a form for Crawford County. If you want, if you guys have an appetite to have it further refined, I mean, that, I can certainly do that. And I would leave it up to you. And as far as some of these paragraphs that were flagged, it's, the, the, the resolution is, as I have kind of given it to you guys, and as, pretty much as it was given to me, is about ninety percent, uh, recitation of facts, case law, uh, and just other publications and decisions. And those are more or less after it. And then there's that remaining ten percent that, um, they take that information and create a stake or position out of it. And essentially, it's an argument, kind of. There's no, there's nothing necessarily wrong with that being an argument. But it's, it's a recitation of facts and case law with the conclusion. And the conclusion, whether or not it follows from everything cited before it, I mean, it's not that it doesn't. It's just that there might be more than one interpretation of that conclusion. I guess it'd be the best way that I could put it. And it's not an argument in the sense that we're trying to invite another side to have an opposition, but it's, it's, it's the, the condensing of facts and case law and, and statements into a county position. And that's what it is. You're justifying the county, the county's position on its view on the I U B's use of eminent domain.
Let, let me ask you this then, do you, what's, what would you say is the point of doing this? When you've done it prior to I U B making a decision? We sent in a letter stating that we are not in favor of you using eminent domain in the Summit Carbon Pipeline. I U B chose to use eminent domain, uh, for Summit Carbon, um, to use eminent domain. And so now it's after the fact and then we know there's gonna be appeals and it's gonna continue through the process, but do you see, I mean, what's, what's the reasoning behind us doing something like this?
What's the value?
Yeah, what's the value? The thing.
Uh, the best I can answer that question is the value would be whatever value that you guys have put on it. Uh, it has no. I suppose that's the way to put it, uh, cause it has no, uh, legal impact on I U B. It has no, I mean, it shouldn't have any legal repercussions, although I can't, like I said earlier, I can't predict how other people would respond to it. But it's not important, it's not a regulation, uh, it's not standards in place. It's not that extra hoop that the federal courts worried about the preemption. And so it's essentially, this is how we deal with it.
But that's way, through the appeals process. These might come up and say, hey, look at, we got ninety nine counties that have passed a resolutions saying they're against eminent domain. We have their resolutions here, they lay them out under judge, and they like. Obviously, they're just statements of the ninety nine counties that say.
It just sounds.
So I guess that's where my value is coming to help with that field process. I mean, like, there's no real legal, nothing, just, it's, it's just our statements and we continue to be against.
I think that's what the county should do.
I mean, the counties were against it before the decision. Yeah, no, I, I'm not disagree, I'm not even just, I do this and I guess that would be, we wrote a letter stating we're against it, now we're, we're formalizing it in the form of a resolution.
Uh, we know what they're doing. Dave?
Yeah, I think too, Craig, it kind of goes the sentiment of the people across the county that continually, we already did that with the I U B, right, you know, we continue to disagree with eminent domain. Part of this process, we were against the pipeline, we don't think eminent domain should be used.
Yes, that we all feel.
I have. I am, I am worried about that last there, where you brought up that it's a controversial stake. You know, cause it didn't, it says, that we, the, the Board of Supervisors in Bremer County under the, I'm looking at their.
Right, yeah, yeah, it says Crawford County now.
Yeah, but I mean, it's exercise any power and perform any function it deems appropriate to protect and preserve the rights, privileges and property of the county and the residents, blah, blah, blah. All right, are we, are we offering or issuing a, a, a threat?
No, so, so the whole resolution is, that's like the, the major conclusion is that last, I mean, it's just. The major conclusion is that last, I mean, it's just it's titled therefore, everything else is a whereas. And this is the this is the conclusion of all the other wheres. And the conclusion with this resolution says is the county's interpretation of home rule. It would not be inconsistent with the laws of Iowa for it to take a position that eminent domain should not be used by the I U B for private economic gain. And so the county is saying that as we look at home rule. Because home rule is limited by it cannot be in conflict with the laws of the state. That is one of the, I mean, is the the limiter of home rule. And then everything else not touched by statute can be tinkered with at the county level. And so. The position, the conclusion of this resolution is this board would be declaring that it does not feel constrained or in conflict with state law. By utilizing home rule to take the position that eminent domain should not be used.
Okay.
And that and it's controversial in the sense that. Ultimately, it's it will be. It's always the courts who declare the parameters of statute. And for the, and I I I call it controversial in the sense that. For a a county to declare for itself. That it's not constrained or can utilize home rule in this way. That's what's kind of controversial, not that it's controversial in the sense of playing. It it's just that for for the county to interpret the law itself in this way. Is a bit time.
But we're reaching out to our executive of the court to help us through that. So that that's why we believe in a sense, that's one of the reasons we believe in the COVID or the a resolution like this. And is that what I'm I'm saying by asking you to interpret it for us?
Yeah.
I mean, it it shows that we were trying to trying to research it legally and weren't just basing it on our own emotional opinion.
Sure, yeah. And and ultimately, because the the statement says that the board is going to utilize home rule to take this position. That's different than we're going to utilize home rule to pass this ordinance. And that's a key distinction. Because the ordinance would be a hoop. The hoop would be preemptive. But taking a position is just just a lot million different than adding a.
And I think the final therefore, you know, just kind of states. That's how this board be therefore.
Yeah.
I mean, the final therefore, yeah, is.
Pretty much.
That that sums it all up. I guess that could be the only there.
Yeah.
Just because I guess the because on some of the information that you sent us along with that on Sunday afternoon and reading through.
Nice Sunday afternoon read, right?
I didn't get it till Monday morning, but um. Is that when we say private company, is that seems like that the court has deemed that even if you are a private company, the for-profit company. Then if what you're doing is for the public good, even though you're making a profit off it, that's a we can let you use eminent domain.
Yes. I mean, that is exactly the Hunt Nanny case that that I attached. I mean, that's.
So you say private company. That's why I guess when I see that in there, I'm like, really? That's not human law.
Right.
The law says, no, you can't be a private company.
Yeah, you that's a great point.
So get eminent domain.
Yeah. And and a distinction that also needs to be made is, I mean, yes, Summit Carbon would be the beneficiary of an eminent domain decision, but they didn't make the decision. It's it's the Iowa Utilities Board that's that's utilizing.
Granting them permission to use.
Summit on its own can't go around and make people stop. It's the it's the government.
And they still have to give fair value.
Yes. Yeah, that's part of the taking stuff. Just compensation.
No, I know this will.
Which let me ask you a question. I mean, it probably doesn't have to do with this, but now that it's been approved. Is just compensation something that Summit comes up with or is that where they, you know, we've already done these kind of contracts which are public record? And been that, yeah. Is that where you would define the just compensation as by the act of that stuff?
They would argue. The landowner would have a position like, I don't want my land taken, but if you are going to take it from me. But of course, this would assume that they're not going to pursue some kind of litigation to stop it. But let's say they say fine and that domain's going to happen. This is the value of what you're going to pay.
I think this is where Kai or or compensation or our county board of adjustments or whatever.
Yeah.
We'll make sure we were full prior to this would get together and meet and. Sit down and talk between two and formulate a plan of, all right, your land is going to be Summit, you're going to pay this much.
And did the I U B.
And that was where my mind was going is how do we give give them? Basically, the tools to work with, they need to decide.
I mean, I thought in that five hundred page ruling, that the I U B ruled that Summit cannot offer less than what the highest amount that they have already offered that land. So they can't come back to the landowner and say, hey, the average in Crawford County or the average in your township is this much. That's all I'm going to offer you. Even though they may have offered them. That they can't offer less than what the highest amount is that they've already offered.
Excellent.
It's the way I understood. I could be, I guess, I'm not a thousand percent.
And I don't remember that part. I could be.
But that's what I thought was part of the agreement. And they can't start construction until they get approved by North Dakota to South Dakota.
Right. I get that. Okay, I that was that was a question. I mean, I just, obviously, some people are gonna, unless they win something for. I mean, I I want to make sure that they're going to get. Treated, yeah, or treated.
Fair.
Fair subjective, but you know, to them, it's never going to be fair. Glenn, right? You know, you see what I point, I mean, down the road, you know, you can look back and say, boy, they really screwed them or they, you know, they were they were game. That's I'm hoping that it'll be the latter.
Throw it out there. I would make the motion to approve the resolution on this on addition for eminent domain.
Well, sorry.
All right. Any further discussion? The resolution, so I would call it eventually, Dave. Hi.
Hi. Hi.
Dave, Kyle?
Hi.
Hi.
Jean, hi. All right, it's been approved. Thank you for discussing.
Thanks, Colin. Thank you guys. It was very helpful.
I feel like you worked on the weekend. I appreciate that all.
Well, it was important to you guys. I knew it's an important issue in the county.
Well, it kind of resupports what we actually set up in.
I agree.
So it isn't saying something that we weren't already.
Right.
And on the table saying, you know, I mean, not officially saying, but yeah.
All right. Very good. Thank you. So discussion, take actions, land management agreement would be visited forever. Have we gotten any one of the tidings?
Listen. I actually be in here last week with this update.
Yeah.
New new parcel of. P R P going, well, crap up the hole.
This is much.
So Jerry, you had this updated to include the legal descriptions of all the properties, including what will be put in in October?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, it does. Mostly that. Hey, hard red, soft home.
So just the old one for reference.
Oh, thank you so much.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to read the description. Yeah, a lot bigger.
Yeah, it was the old one.
So what come out is that I can get that, but so.
This was a good catch.
I use the fallators that you and Terry had discussed, so that it won't change.
And this will just be revolving until one party term ends.
Yeah, well, if Craig had pointed out some. I mean, is that needed to happen on the renewal clause? That's at the the last paragraph before number one paragraph. Just the renewal, the auto renew language. Clean up.
Does Megan have this?
I can email it to you. I can email it to Megan too.
Okay, because the the notary stuff isn't correct. Ty Rosford is not the chair.
Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. And it should be, um, um, who's the other, the Langholtz? Josh. Josh Langholtz, the president currently.
Yeah, Terry, you do have.
Sorry about that.
I do?
Yeah, well, I sent it this morning. You're already here.
Okay.
Want me to go give it to Megan real quick?
Would you mind? I would appreciate. I don't have a way to do it in here. All right.
Cross.
No.
The oddness.
I'd like to do that. I like.
Having oddness correct.
We do have one.
We got it.
This morning.
Exactly.
You have been like a conversation.
All right. So what?
Do you have any communication against the sentence forever?
No, I didn't. I Terry sent the email out and I kind of read through it. So I was fresh on it. It's pretty grand. I would get some, but I agree. I just think they want to know officially what they're going to do.
Was they more part of those original conversationalists?
And it's just dates it cleans up.
Them getting to know us and we getting to know them.
Yeah, we have some new leadership after K R.
I mean, other than the legals, I don't think.
And then they change that paragraph that says it expires.
Unless.
They they took that out, this paragraph, this line right here. They took that out.
Oh, that that expired it.
That maybe expired, got it. Took that one out too. So so those were the things that were, I think, and they've updated it. So we'll hold it on the citizen input while he's updating outside.
Okay, yep, here he comes back.
That was fast.
Yeah, if you're just taking action, you can.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve the land management agreement with pheasants forever.
All right. Any further discussion? Uh, it's a, is that a resolution also? No, it's a land management agreement. Just a ready. Right. All favor eye?
Aye.
Any opposed and signed? Chair votes aye. Land management agreement has been approved. Once it gets in here, we'll sign it. All right. So citizen input. Ready to hear for some citizen input?
John?
Yeah. My name is John Butler. I got some land west of town. I turned in some weeds to the weed commissioner ten days ago and twenty days ago, and nothing's been done yet. Do you not send notices anymore?
Did you call John? Did you call the weed commissioner?
One time.
Okay.
He said he was overworked. I called the state A F C S office and the lady said, oh, you neighbors have vessels in their C R P. And the weed commissioner says, cut them. They have to cut. You don't have to go through the asset office here. But I turned in several patches. Nothing's been done in twenty days. I don't know who your weed commissioner is. He called me and said he was overworked. One of you supervisors got in charge.
So we need to follow up with him. Just to know if he got a notification to those people. And whether, you know, there's a process he has to do and if they're not.
By day, he told me that when he sent notice, they had several pages cut it, or he'd sent it through in twenty days. It's flooded up. And I have his phone number on my phone when he called and told me that. Way over there.
We appreciate that, John, because I mean, we don't know until we get input from the public as to what's happening out there. So I appreciate that.
You drive around the country, vessels are getting bigger every year because you guys hire a part-time weed commissioner. And you don't probably even know what vessel looks like.
We will call and thank you, John. We will actually get a hold of you. Any other, anybody else on Zoom that would like?
I'll be just.
Bonnie. Maybe hold on.
Thank you very much. Good morning. Um, thank you for passing the resolution. As you, as you noted, it it really doesn't do anything. But if all the counties involved reiterate, reiterate the fact that they don't approve of eminent domain for this project. It it might help might help us a little bit. I also kind of want to clarify something about the eminent domain process. The I, the I U C order says that Summit cannot begin construction until they have the permits in the Dakotas. But the I U C order was unclear as to when eminent domain can start. And all of the attorneys involved are trying to get not trying to figure that out and ask the courts to interpret that. And it's possible that eminent domain proceedings may begin before the construction begins. We don't know. We're just kind of in limbo. And the one of you mentioned something about the fact that some, the I U C ordered Summit to pay us the latest offer they made. Before the ruling, and that is true. Right now, up until eminent domain proceedings start. But once eminent domain proceedings start, that's off the table. And Summit doesn't decide what what we get paid. That that will be decided in each county. So anyway, I just wanted to clarify that. And maybe in a way, let you know the amount of stress we are all dealing with right now. So thank you.
Bonnie?
Yes.
Is that when you mentioned that domain proceeds.
Mate, you're really cutting out on the Zoom this morning, especially especially Craig's, uh, mic is really cutting out on us.
He's going to move. He's moving.
Say, Bonnie, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Is that when you mentioned the fact that you said eminent domain proceedings could start prior to construction? Do have you heard what would happen if they declared eminent domain and I guess if you want to say foreclosed on your property. Came up with an amount they were going to pay you and then North Dakota or South Dakota did not approve. What would happen to that easement moving forward if North and South Dakota did not approve? Are you aware through your legals what what they think would happen?
That is an excellent question, Craig, and we are all wondering that. We are all wondering if we are forced into an eminent domain easement. Will it be valid even if the project fails? We don't know. And and the easements, the voluntarily signed easements are in perpetuity. They last forever. At the end of the project, you know, if C O two. Is no longer in the pipes, Summit may be able to sell them. The easements to somebody else to use our the pipes for something else. We don't know. It's it's all kind of up in the air. That even adds to our stress. So thank you for asking that.
Thank you, Bonnie.
And also Summit, to be very clear, Summit does not set the amount of our compensation if this goes to eminent domain. That that will be set by a board in the county.
We we made sure we get a full board for that.
Bankers, farmers, all.
And also you don't decide who the board is. That is decided by a judge.
They pick from the list that we supplied to them, Bonnie. Yeah, but they have to meet certain qualifications to be on the list, so.
Decide who those six or eight people are from your list. That will be decided by a judge and I.
We we have to appoint them to Board of Commissions and then they will, the judge chooses from that list that we that we appointed. So.
Right. But but we, the 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 big thing is we have no idea when that is going to happen. It might be. Uh, sooner or it might be later and and it it's very stressful. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you. uh, sooner or it might be later. And, and it, it's very stressful. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Really appreciate it, Bonnie. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it. All right. Anybody else for citizen input? They did you good? All right. Hearing no more citizen input, uh, we would need a motion to adjourn.
I make that. Hey, that's the first time I've done that together.
Very.
I'll second.
All right.
I like keeping you all around here.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Chair votes aye. We're now in the, thank you, everybody, for your input and, uh, with discussions today. Thank you. Very good.
Yeah, I got an email from Rachel Bennett. I'd be on the panel as that.